Motion carries. So, the next item on the agenda will be the recognitions for this evening and we're super excited to have you all here with us. It's one of the funnest things we get to do as a board. So, we're gonna get to hear about some of the great things that our students do at all of our schools and one of our staff members tonight. So, to kick it off, we'll have... There we go.
Alright, Abraham Lincoln is excited to honor Harper today because she is a first grade student at Abe and she leads both by academic excellence and also following the school rules all the time and always doing what's right. And usually, we keep it a secret at Abe until morning meeting. However, somebody was so excited, another adult, that they congratulated her. And she said, "What? It's me?" But you weren't surprised, is that correct? Because she knows she's always doing the right thing. So, it was not a surprise to celebrate her at school, but we were excited to do so. I will let Mrs. Steele and Mrs. McGee tell you a little bit about why they nominated her.
Yeah, so I'm Mrs. Steele, first grade teacher for Harper, and she's just an amazing student. I will say, I haven't nominated a first grade student in years. I think once we kind of started, we were gonna start looking at some of our older students and giving them those opportunities. But I knew Harper was gonna get it some year anyway, so I thought, why not now? She is one of the most respectful, kind friends. She works with some of our toughest kiddos and is always there as a leader and a helper, setting a good example for both the old and the young in our building. And as far as academics go, she is by far one of my friends that pushes herself all the time. I was saying this at morning meeting, but she is the only first grade student that I've ever had complete all the IXL math skills for first grade, and she did that before Christmas. So, and that was just totally on her own. So, she's working at a higher level and she's always challenging herself and looking to do better for herself and even her classmates, so.
Yeah, we talked about Harper a lot because we're very excited about her and I think the thing that most compelled me to choose her already as a first grader is that Harper is so, so driven. She's so excited to learn. She's watching the IXL videos on her own to teach herself fourth grade skills. And then if she doesn't understand, when I stop in to pick up somebody else, she's like, "Mrs. McGee, can you teach me about prime and composite numbers?" So, I think that's what's really, really exciting about Harper and I know that's gonna be a skill that serves her really, really well in her future. And we're just so happy to have you at Abe.
I'm Jim from the Board of Education. I've got a question for you. Do you know what you want to be when you grow up?
No.
An artist. Awesome. But even if you don't know, or if you want to be an artist, doing what's right, being respectful, and pushing yourself, those are qualities that are gonna help you to do whatever you want in life. So, I know you're already a great big sister and a great relative and fellow student, so thank you for all you're doing. We need more people like you in our community. We've got a certificate to commemorate the evening and a gift certificate to Barnes &amp; Noble. You cannot buy your dad golf balls with that, but I built a new book for yourself and for one of your siblings, okay? So, congratulations.
Northside's really, really excited to introduce to you Ariane Castellanos. She, first, I'm probably gonna steal a little bit of your thunder, but Ariane, I'm really excited about this because Ariane is a student that was what we call force transferred. This year, it's a Northside as a third grader. And anytime we have to do that as a district, we feel terrible because it's really hard on families and it's hard on kids too, right? So, for Ariane to come in and to win this award so quickly speaks just volumes about the person that she is. So, I'm gonna let Mrs. Rindell and Mr. Kessler talk a little bit more about it.
For those of you who don't know, every morning at the door, we have a greeting and generally, it's like a simple high five, but she walked in on the first day of school at a brand-new school with a brand-new teacher and decided she wanted to dance. And I was like, she has got this figured out. And she knows what she's doing and she carried that positive energy with her throughout the entire year so far. She shared it with her teachers. They've definitely all seen it in her, this warmth and positive energy, and then also among her classmates. And as a teacher who's not bilingual, she has been the most amazing asset and she sees not just our Spanish-speaking students, but all students in the classroom who need help, and she fills in the gaps and she helps out. She doesn't wait to be prompted or asked for it. And she takes care of herself, but more than that, she takes care of others. So, proud, so happy to have you at Northside. We're just so lucky.
And yeah, so I had the privilege of working with Ariane last year at Parkside when I was there for a year. And so, I got to know her there and just see what a leader she was there. And when she came over to Northside this year, I was just so excited to see what a smooth transition it was for her. You know, you worry about those kids when they make that transition. It's gonna be tough. It was nothing for her. She just came right in. She was instantly a leader in the classroom. She has been such an amazing help with the three different newcomers that we've had come through her classroom this year, just helping them feel more comfortable in the classroom, helping them feel like they are a part of the school community along with her and everyone else. She's just been an awesome, awesome leader this year and it's great to see how much you've grown this year, Ariane. I'm really proud of you.
Ariane, on behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to thank you and tell you how proud we are of you and your bravery and your leadership skills. And I just wanna ask you to just keep dancing. And keep being that role model for your students as you are with us for another, you know, two years at Northside. So, to recognize this evening, we have a gift certificate from Barnes &amp; Noble and a piece of paper that shows you exactly what you're gonna see this evening. So, thank you so much.
Julia Keen, come on up. Julia Keen, I am so excited to give you this award. Mrs. Lerman couldn't be here tonight, but I said, of all times, I have plenty to say about Julia Keen and all that she's given to Parkside and all that she gives to our community. The Parkside theme for this month is giving back, and so we're talking about different ways that kids within the building can give back to their peers, can give back to the school, can give back to the community. And Julia, you are an excellent example of that. You are incredibly involved at Parkside. You are a leader. You're someone we can count on, but you're also incredibly involved in the community. You contribute to sports. You contribute to community organizations. You contribute to your church. And you lead in the same way that all of your family members do. Your brothers are involved. Your parents are involved. Your aunts and uncles, your grandparents. You have an amazing family of leaders around you, and I know that you will contribute to your community in the same way. Just last week, we were short subs and I went into the lunchroom at lunchtime to talk to some fifth graders and kind of prep them for the fact that, oh, we're rotating the next person into their classroom because we were just trying to get through the day. And I specifically stopped at the table where Julia and her friends were sitting and I said, "Hey, guys, so-and-so's coming in for the afternoon. Like, I need you guys to help keep it together in that fifth-grade classroom." And Julia and her friends were, "Yep, we got it, Mrs. Shrammy. Well, we'll make sure everyone's doing what they're supposed to be doing." So, Julia, thank you for being the leader that you are and the amazing student. We are incredibly proud of you.
I'm Teresa. I am so excited to give this to you. I could not be more proud of you and the person that you are and the person that I, that you're becoming and the leader that you are at school and in the community and the fierce independence you show in everything you do and the friend that you are to other people. We say two things off it. So, what can we control? When we get to school every day, we say, "Make it up." And I think you do both of those things all of the time. And I'm proud of you every single day, not because you're just a great at Parkside, but because you're an amazing human being. You get a certificate.
Alright, Monroe Middle School is so excited to recognize Maya. I won't steal all your thunder, but I am so excited to tell the board, we hosted the JAM, the Middle School State Conference, Student Council Conference this weekend. And Maya served on the Region Five. That's for all the schools in Region Five. She served as our secretary this past year. So, she got up on Sunday, yesterday, and gave a speech that you were writing right then and there. And she got up and she spoke and she was voted in to be Region Five president as she transitions to high school. So, that speaks volumes about Maya and what a wonderful human she is. She's been very involved in our building. Sixth grade, I remember seeing you and to be honest with you, it was a hard transition for you, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yes, it was very tough for her. So, the amount of growth that she has made since a sixth grader is so much growth. And you've grown into be such an awesome young lady and you are going to do great things. I'm very proud of you. So, Mrs. Trow.
I am so lucky to have Maya as one of my students. Maya Cappas is in my algebra class. And I know this summer, I remember getting an email that said, you know, "Maya wants to try algebra. She thinks she's ready for it. Her test scores looked okay." And you have just triumphed in that class. I mean, she asks such great questions as she has a question. And she's not just saying like, "How do I do this?" She's like, "How do I get from this step to this step?" I mean, she's got very specific questions and that's what's gonna make you do well at everything you do. She is very much a leader at our middle school. She's in so many different things. She's in band, in choir, in forensics. She is in student councils.
Musical.
Musical. She also has performed and helped with the Monroe Theater Guild, so she's in those as well. So, you are definitely a contributor to so many things. As we talked about you in class, as teachers, we talked about how she has grown so much from a sixth grader to a seventh grader to an eighth grader, not just in how you interact with people, especially adults and other students, but how you have, like your academics. Everything has grown so much since you've been there. We are so proud of you. You are one of the students that approached Mrs. Domon to see if we could do a school-wide, like, activity right before spring break, and that was to decorate our hallways. And you were very instrumental in getting that going. And we did it. It was a great project.
She's been met with me on the snow day along with some other student council officers. So, we set up a Google meeting. We planned it all out. She's great. Sorry.
So, we are so proud of you and all the work that you put into that. I know, like, almost every Wednesday morning, I'm walking into the Libra and she's out there greeting her students as they're coming to their student council meeting. And she's all ready to start that meeting. She's ready to hand out things. And she's always like, "Hello, Mrs. Trow. How are you today?" And it's always so wonderful to see that smile because you are always so grateful. You are articulate. You are compassionate. You are dedicated. You are just really a hard worker. And we are so appreciative of you, of you at Monroe Middle School and all the work that you do for us. And I wish you the best as you go on to the high school. Thank you.
Hi, Maya.
I'm Nikki with the Board of Education. Thank you for all you're doing, all the excitement we just heard from them. They were, they couldn't stop gushing about how wonderful you are. Thank you for being a leader inside and out of school and not for, and for not being afraid to step out of your comfort zone and doing the hard things, right? Because that's gonna get you really far. So, we have a certificate and Barnes &amp; Noble gift card. And just thank you for all you're doing. We wish you all the best in high school too. And keep doing all that you're doing. Great.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Alright, last but not least, I'm Josh Wilson. I'm the associate principal at the high school. I'm here with Laurel Schaefer. Mr. Jackson is running a little bit late. Well, we're fortunate that the person who nominated you, the wonderful Ms. Leto, has created multimedia extravaganza because she is in Ohio watching the eclipse. Well, watched it. I mean, I'm assuming. We got plenty of updates from her over the course of the last couple of days, including today. So, I don't wanna, I'll be honest, I didn't, I didn't watch this. I'm sure it's great. I'm sure she did a wonderful job, but I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna repeat the same thing. So, what I'm just gonna do is I'm gonna read, read the nomination that she wrote. So, she wrote, "Laurel is a wonderful example of what we dream for our students to be. She is hardworking, kind, funny, and a patient person who often goes under the radar because she does not seek the spotlight even when she deserves it. She has high expectations for herself and those she cares about and, despite her reserved nature, will not hesitate to tell them when they need to step it up. She is also a quietly resilient and tenacious person. When things get difficult, she doesn't complain or make a senior excuses. She just gets back up and tries again. I've only ever seen her be respectful and helpful for two teachers and classmates. I've only seen the same thing myself as associate principal. She's not really in my office, which is usually probably a pretty good thing, but when I do see her around, Laurel's always wonderful." So, Ms. Leto continues on, "As the advisor for junior optimist, I've had the privilege of not only working with her in class, but to see her take on different leadership roles. She is an indispensable part of the team, thoughtfully and pragmatically evaluating the pros and cons of different routes and voicing her opinion respectfully. She never shirks on the tasks that are assigned to her. She follows through and asks questions if she needs clarification. She goes above and beyond what is expected for the task and never brags about it. She's such a great example of what it means to lead by example." So, without further ado, let's see what Ms. Leto has to say.
She never brags about what she does. She takes on every task assigned to her and does it joyfully and does it well, even without being told exactly how to do it, because she has an internal idea of what it means to do a good job and an internal motivation for wanting to do a good job. And it's just so refreshing to see in a student who cares deeply about things because it's the right thing to do. She flies under the radar all the time and she does not enjoy being in the spotlight at all. And it's refreshing to see somebody so humble and modest and yet so effective at what they do. She sets high expectations for herself and others and is not afraid to tell people when they're kind of slacking, which is also kind of fun to see because she does it in such a way where it's clear the person sees where she's coming from. They know that she knows. They just want her, that they, that she just wants the best for them. She's quietly resilient. She never blames anybody. She never makes excuses for herself when things don't go well. She just gets right back up and tries again until she gets the outcome that she's looking for. And she also leads by example. Whatever she asks anybody else to do, she's the first one to do also. And I've just appreciated working with her so much over the last four years and getting to know her and getting to be on her journey with her and thinking about her future. And I'm gonna miss her very much. And I am just so excited for everything that she has in store for her. Congratulations, Laurel.
So, I am so glad that we are finally able to kind of recognize what I have known for 18 years, at least they deserve. It's really, it's really great to just have you as a classmate and a friend and a sister and to see how much you try every day, even when, you know, you don't want to, even when we have a ton of other stuff to do. You still try. You always try. You make me try harder, make your classmates try harder. So, I'm really, really glad that we can recognize you and give you this little certificate and a gift card. And just congratulations.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Can you just give your speech? Is that alright?
I'll probably do better if you just let me talk.
Okay, so, I am really honored to be introducing to you our Staff Excellence Award winner. This is Nicole Root-Sager. She is a special education teacher at Northside. We're so fortunate to have her in our district. So, when I think of Nicole, I think of three qualities kind of come to mind about which makes her so top notch. So, the first one I'm gonna say is dedication, okay? And so, I'm gonna go through your resume. I'm probably gonna get this wrong, but this lady has been working in the district since 2007.
Sounds right, yep.
Seven. She started off as like this, working up at the district office, summer school coordinator. And if, that's a beast. And the organization, talking to so many different people and just, she just did an awesome job with that for several years. And then she decided that she wanted to go back to school, be a special education teacher, which I just think is absolutely wonderful. So, she went back and she, she juggled, working and going back to school. And then she came to Northside and she did her student teaching with Tammy Shope as a special education teacher. She then was fully licensed, so she made the terrible decision to go to Claris for a couple of years. Yeah, good experience. No, no, I know they love you. It was a good experience. It was wonderful. But she came to her senses and she came back to Monroe and started working at the middle school. This is your home. You better never leave. And then she came to Northside and then she even had a year where she was between Northside and the middle school. And then she also decided not too long ago to back, go back to school again to get her admin license. So, I know that she will, she'll be doing that someday here too. So, wow, right? Like, that's quite the journey and I think it just speaks so much to your work ethic, your love of education and how much you believe in what we do and the impact that we make. Don't cry, don't cry. The other thing I think of with Nicole is just her compassion. And you can see this with the littles that she's with every single day. And you can see this with the adults that she's with today. She's got a fan club here who absolutely love and adore working with her and then her families. Nicole is the special education teacher who will, she looks, does everything she can for her kids and just things like, if there's a concert or if there's a special event that we have at the school, she will, she's reached out to the parent, texting the parent until they respond. And she's saying, "I'm gonna come get your little one. I'm gonna pick him up in my car." Usually, it's whole Root-Sager family, right KK? "We're gonna go out for dinner. We're gonna go to the event, maybe get some ice cream afterwards, and then I'm gonna take him home." And she doesn't just do that for one student. She does that for almost all of her students who don't show up, which I just think speaks to her and what she's like, an educator. Yes. The other thing is just this, like, level of excellence. She's always pushing for, can we do better? And it's never in, in a way that makes anybody feel uncomfortable. She just, she has this grace about her that just is just always an advocate for kids and doing what's right. I love working with you, Nicole, and I know everybody agrees with that as well. This district is better because of you. Our building is better because, because of you. So, thank you for all that you do for us.
Well, thank you so much. Dedication, compassion, excellence. Those qualities are things that, when you model them, you bring along for the journey, all of your, all of your coworkers. You lift up all the children that you're working so much with, that you care so much with, going above and beyond and making sure that they get the opportunities to participate, just like all of their other equal students do. So, I can't thank you enough for how much effort and work you put into that. From the Board of Education, it's my honor and privilege to present you with this award. And you have the floor.
Thanks. I've got a speech, sorry. I wrote it down because I can't. "Thank you to my amazing coworkers for nominating me for this award. It is an honor to receive it. I'm able to do my job each day because of the support from Amy, from being part of the amazing kindergarten, first grade, and special education teams. I'm so appreciative of each of them. This is my 11th year working for the district. I never could imagine how my life would change by taking the position as a summer school secretary all those years ago. The job evolved and changed, and I guess I did too. I'm so thankful for those around me who saw the potential to become a teacher and encouraged me to get my teaching license. There was never a question about what type of teacher I wanted to be. I loved teaching special ed. I've had the opportunity to teach at all three levels, elementary, middle, and high school, but I love my current role working with kindergarten and first grade students. Please don't let my love of the job fool you. It is hard work. I think Tammy and I joke almost every day about something that's happening in the classroom that they didn't teach us about in teacher school. I quickly learned in my first year of teaching that I need to listen to my gut and teach from my heart. It has served me well over the years. Every day is different. Doesn't matter how much planning I do, something will change. Good thing I have patience, lots of patience. Sometimes my patience is used up during the day and I don't have much left when I get home. And there are days that I'm just tired. So, the people who I really owe the thank you to are my family. My husband Scott and my three daughters. Don't always get the patient smiley mom. Although, my husband can't understand why I want to keep going to school. He's so worried. Years of nights and weekends of college classes so that I've become a teacher and now continue through grad school. So, thank you to all of you. I truly appreciate it."
Alright, congratulations again to all of our Excellence Award winners this evening. Thank you for joining us. If we could get all of our award winners up to the front for a group picture. Thank you again for coming and have a great evening.
Did you see, you did such a great job with first grade.
So, what's had you to have a front?
Congratulations.
Alright, next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. Do any board members wish to remove an individual item for consideration? Do any board members wish to remove an individual item for consideration? Oh. So hearing now requests to remove individual items, we'll read them into the record. We're approving the minutes for the Board of Education meeting, March 11, 2024. Board of Education meeting, February 19, 2024. Approval of support staff resignation. Malika Jubek, High School Education Assistant. Nicole Carlino, High School Health Aid. Approval of support staff retirement. Sherry Atkinson, Northside Custodian after 10 years of service. Approval of professional staff resignation. Caitlin Lindberg, Northside Special Education. Jennifer Newcomer, Abraham Lincoln Speech Language Pathologist. Approval of professional staff hiring. Lauren Ritter, Middle School Psychologist. Alexa Shilt, High School Math. Approval of exempt staff retirement. Cindy Rupnow, Board of Education Administrative Executive Assistant after 46 years of service to our district. More on that in just a moment. Also approving acceptance of community donations from Joanne and David Babler, $50 to Backpack Buddies. Howard and Mary Ann Johnson, $30 to Backpack Buddies. Wisconsin Metals Materials for Metals II Class. And new welding carts. Greedy Castings. Maintenance and repairs of various tech department equipment. And an anonymous high school senior donated several new backpacks to Parkside. So just wanted to stop for a moment and to again recognize 46 years of service to the district from Cindy in many different capacities. And I don't know, I've got mixed feelings. I'm excited for you to start the next chapter of traveling and family. But we are certainly going to miss you a whole lot. And I think we'll plan a little more of a formal celebration of your time with us here at a future board meeting. But for now, I'll just attempt to express my gratitude as a board member for how much you've meant to us and to countless students, staff, and the community. All the work that you do behind the scenes to provide guidance and understanding and your selfless dedication. And the list goes on for 46 years, worth it. So thank you so very, very much. On behalf of a grateful community, thank you for everything you've done for us.
So just a couple more quick comments, Cindy, and I'll make them short, I promise. So, so first of all, it's really rare to find anybody that stays in a business for 46 years. Much less something like this. And Cindy's level of selfless sacrifice and things that she's done for this district over the time, for the staff, the students, the community, for everybody, it's, words won't do it justice. And I know I don't just speak for myself. I'm very happy for you and your family that you're going to get to be able to enjoy this time now in retirement. But the selfish part of it is, we are absolutely going to miss you. And I know that it's been my privilege and my pleasure to be able to work with you for my first two years here. So thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. With that, I would entertain a motion. I was going to say, I know we don't want to let her know, but we have to. All right. By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda is public comment. I don't have anybody signed in for public comment. I don't see anybody here intending to make public comment. No old business, new business. We have a high school project update, so this is an informational item for the board. We've got several members of the team here tonight. We've got Todd Kurczma. We've got Tony Buss with CG Schmidt. We've got Mike Huffman from Huffman Keel. We've got Michael Brush with Plunkett Research and Associates. And we've got Jesse Duff with Farah Graham here to update us a little bit. And I believe Michael has a fly-through of the campus again to give us an update on that. Immediately after this item, we'll be walking through bid package one. So with the help of CG and Huffman Keel, we'll be working through that. And I'm not going to steal anything, any of your updates, Mr. Figueroa, because there's a, we've had some significant and exciting progress since our last meeting. So some major steps towards groundbreaking. I'm going to turn it over to you to bring us up to speed on this.
Okay, so I think we'll do these, we'll get through these in a minute or two. And then we'll turn this over to Michael so he can show off the stuff that we have designed and the 3D rendering. So Board of Education was issued a conditional use permit from the City of Monroe on Wednesday, March 13, just after our previous board meeting. This was the last contingency to meet before closing on the property. Additional conditions placed by the planning commission are being completed and they're being addressed related to the closing. The title work, the driver permits, the height of the athletic field lighting, and then an agreement on the best way to improve traffic flow at an intersection to the south of the school property. So the town of Sylvester, town of Monroe, and the county were all very interested and helpful in reviewing and issuing the required permits in a very efficient manner. So we did close on the property on Thursday, March 21 at Eckham Title. Bid package one, and that's going to be for the mass site excavation and utilities. That was due on Thursday, March 28. CG Schmidt's here tonight, as Rich said, and they're going to share information and answer questions about the site and utilities bids. That'll be on our next agenda item. The district continues to work with BNS regarding the possibility of access to the new site from the north. We haven't come to an agreement yet and we're hoping to come to an agreement soon. And then that would, that would give us north access to the school site. And if we do get an agreement in place, then the district would not be constructing the KK entrance or exit. That could become a road in the future, but not built by the school. The district is discussing with the city and BNS about the possibility of participating in a community lift station, which would serve a larger area and be developed in the future for housing and business. So as of tonight, our expected start date for groundbreaking should be mid to late May. So we pretty much stay on topic. So after that, Michael, are you ready to go?
I'm ready to go.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. This should be relatively brief and simple. And it's a little bit of a rerun, actually, from the last time I was here. We're going to show you the same basic fly-through with a couple of additions. I remember standing there and someone was sitting in the front saying, are you going to show us the auditorium? And I said, no, we're not going to show you the auditorium. But tonight, we're going to show you the auditorium.
And that's red now, too.
And that's red. All of this is red. You know, it's reflecting the grass. So anyway, it is all red. So we're going to show you the auditorium and some other additions to the project. But again, you're going to see a lot of the same things. So that's good news because last time we were here, we were still in schematic design. And now we're at the end of what we call design development, which means that we're theoretically done with design. And everything is pretty much still in place from the last time you saw it. So the project is progressing really well. We're staying on budget and we're getting everything that we thought we were going to get in the school. So while it might look like a bit of a repeat, it's actually good news because we haven't had to cut anything significantly out of the project. So I'm going to start off by showing you the floor plans a little bit and talk to you about some of the things that have changed. And then we'll do a fly-around the outside of the building and then a fly-through the commons and into the auditorium and out near the football field. And then we'll end up on the second floor just to, so you can remember what it was like to walk up there and look down over the commons and see everything. So I'm going to step back here so I can point at some things. And then we're going to just cycle through the site plans because nothing has changed there. And we're going to go to the first floor plan. Okay, on the first floor, of course, we're going to show you the inside of the auditorium. We're going to enter in on this side of the auditorium and show you the view from over here and up towards the stage. So you've got a good glimpse of that today. One of the major changes that we've recently done is down here in what is called the launch area. And that just was recently redesigned.
I'm going to have you come up here, Michael, so that the stream can see what you're pointing at.
All right, so the launch area is right in here and this has been redesigned a little bit. I'm going to show you some pictures of what this might look like. It's basically a large open space. And if any of you are familiar with coworking spaces, like WeWorks and things like that, where there's places for adults to come in and sit and work at benching tables. And then there's a place, there's soft seating where they can work. And there's, you know, kitchenette where they can hang out and also work. That's what this space is meant to be like. So it's kind of a furniture solution, but I'll show you a couple of pictures after I go through this plan. Otherwise, nothing has really changed much at all. I mean, you can see we still have the forestation gym. Nothing has really changed in these areas, so I won't go into detail at all. The commons is still the same. We did a little tweak here in the receiving area, but really, nothing's changed much at all on the floor plan. So let me show you what the WeWorks, what the launch area could look like. And this is kind of dramatic. I mean, again, this is a furniture solution. We'll find out what we can afford and what we can put into this. But the idea is that there is flexible furniture. Kids can come in there and get help with their projects and work independently and feel a little bit more like they're part of the next step in their life. So these are just kind of examples of actual professional environments that are designed to be what we want launch to be. So I didn't have any fly-throughs of that and I wanted to show it. I know Jeremy's excited about it. Everybody's super excited about it. So these are kind of placeholders of what that might look like. So let's go look at the second floor. Second floor, I think literally nothing's changed. That's about all we need to tell you. We still have all the same spaces that we had before, so I won't spend much time. I do want to remind you, though, that you come up this stair and there's a walkway out here overlooking the commons. So when we, the last video I'm going to show you is going to be walking across this bridge and then looking down. So just as a point of orientation. Okay, how about the lower level? Lower level looks really big. It's actually just blown up because I could fit it on the screen that way. But it's, remember, it was a small little piece of the overall plan. The only thing that's really changed here is we've added a, well, let's see, a sixth station for basketball. This red one here was oriented down here. This was junior varsity. We've added this one here oriented north-south. Now, this is a little bit in limbo, right? Because we, I mean, we think we can swing this, but yeah, okay. So this is the plan. This is new. But other than that, nothing's really changed on this floor either. So all good news. So how about if we do the overall fly-around? Now, pretend everything's actually red. See, it's glowing up from the grass there. We got to get red grass. So we're seeing into the commons and this is the administrative wing. Classrooms, classrooms, coming around to CTE. This is automotive down here in the corner. Metals, and then woods and trades over here. You can see the glass from the commons. And then this is all just, here there'd be a lot of stuff going on for services. This is the gymnasium. Exits out of the gymnasium, the stair to the, the fitness center. And the multipurpose room is there. The fitness center is here. And then we have music wrapping around the auditorium. You can see the backside of the commons. You're getting a little glimpse of the concession building overlooking the stadium. And then we come around where the dressing rooms are for the auditorium and the scene shop. And then we have the large 40 by 70 greenhouse that we're hoping to be able to have someday. Two-story classroom wing. And this is that learning center that kind of juts out a little bit. And then another view back into the, into the commons. Okay, so now we're going to fly into the commons. This is a secure entrance. When you come through this door, you'll have to go through another door to get into the office and then into the building. And so we have a polished concrete floor. We have Family and Consumer Sciences on that side. We're going to see the servery over here. You might recognize all those athletic photos that you've collected over the years. This is actually the tray return for the cafeteria function that would be out in the commons. And there's that servery, which is all kind of flexible, movable equipment. Glimpse into the library. And I know there's a lot of white furniture in there. Don't worry about that. We wouldn't actually be doing white furniture. We still have the wood up here, which is awesome. And then we're seeing the curve of the auditorium sticking into the commons area. And then this red surround around the gymnasium wall. And I don't know if you remember this part where we actually fly through the basketballs. My favorite part of the whole. There is actually sound, but anyway. This is how the gym is looking. We don't have all of the branding in here yet. I know we have funds for that. We haven't determined exactly what we can do yet. But none of the kind of fun stuff on the walls is being shown yet. Coming back out, looking back down the commons, the second floor. The auditorium, we have some display areas there for the auditorium. And then we're going to walk into the auditorium now. So right now, we're showing some wood slats on the wall. This is something, you know, it's maple plywood applied to the wall in order to give it reflectivity and durability and add some color and texture to the space. It's not currently in the budget, but we're hoping that we can get it in by the time the project is finished. Everything else that you see is in the budget. Now, we're going to take it out of glimpse. These are all images, this is kind of a placeholder, you know, an imagination that we had. Those are all images taken from various scenes from Monroe High School history. And then we're going to go down the music hallway. We're showing all the storage for all the band equipment. And there's a little collaboration area here before we get to the actual band room itself. We have a, this is new, this is sound lock. So if there's a performance in the auditorium and the band could still be, or some kind of function during the day, the band could still be blasting away in here and it wouldn't disturb the auditorium. We actually have the Monroe Fight Song going. All right, so now we're going to go outside and we're getting a glimpse of that concession building. There's where the concessions would be. And then all the toilets and so forth. And then there's actually a step up into the press box so that the press box is high enough that it would, the windows are above anybody who might be standing on the upper level. And again, there's fences and things like that that we're not showing, but you get the idea. And then you will be able to go in here also to use the bathrooms and, you know, buy merch and access the concessions on certain days as well. Now, initially, it's, we currently are holding, are building the space for the toilet rooms in the concession building, but we don't have the funds for it right now. So if that building opens without toilets on day one, that's a possibility. We hope again that that doesn't happen once we send the project out for actual bids. Okay, so the last image is, or the last video is just of walking across that bridge. This is the one that connects the north wing of classrooms to the south wing of classrooms. You walk across the bridge and go ahead and run that, Jen. Giving you a sense of what it's going to feel like. This is the toilet room stacked on both floors. And then we're going to go past the physics classroom. And then the biology, physics classroom we're actually going to go into. Which, this is very similar to the last time you saw this video, except we've added a little bit of detail in the flooring. Last time we did this, we didn't have the rubber flooring on the floor. It was just concrete. It was just concrete. And we've since that time decided that concrete on the second floor wouldn't be a good idea. But otherwise, you might recognize the same quote by Albert Einstein. So that is the extent of the presentation. Do we have any questions?
Questions for board members? That's great. Thank you.
Good. All right.
Mike, a quick question. The press box, I hadn't seen that. I'm assuming that'll be handicap accessible as well? Will that have a ramp that allows people to get up to that higher elevated press box?
It could, but it doesn't need to be. So we haven't shown that yet. And if we did that, it would be a lot bigger element to get up that high. It's, I think, four feet off the ground, so we would need 48 feet of ramp to do that.
The press box is under 500 square feet, so that doesn't require that to have that.
Okay.
Other questions? All right, thank you, Mike. All right, anything else on the project update?
No.
Okay. So we're going to move on to item B. Item B is the review and approval of selection in bid package one. So the competitive bidding process for the initial bid package we're referring to as bid package one for the excavation and site work associated with our project has been completed. The item is up for action before the board. And CG Schmidt will walk us through the bids. And Huffman Keel and admin team will cover their recommendation. We'll have discussion to determine which firm we'll select and then we'll take action to award the bid package tonight.
I'm Tony Boss, project manager. So I'll be going over the bid results with you. Board should have three pieces of paper or three documents. One would be an executive summary. And then there's a bid tab sheet for each category. One was for earthwork and one was for site utilities. Like they said before, this was a, for bid package one, which is by and large the site work, civil drawings. So the biggest, two largest scopes of work are earthwork, it's mass excavation, moving the dirt. And then the utilities for actually getting the underground utilities pipe work in place to service the site. So the detailed sheets, which I call bid tabs, are here and look like this. They have all the different bids that we've got kind of spread across. And I will say, one fabulous thing was that there's a lot of bidder interest out here in this project. Eight bidders on an earthwork package is just unbelievable. There's a lot of people excited about this. And we did some pre-bid meeting out on the site. And there's just a lot of interest and it was fun to see. So we had eight earthwork bids and six utility bids. So what the process is, of course, we have our pre-bid meeting. We send it out to bid. We accept the bids. We go through them, try to make sure everything's apples to apples because some people exclude some things and some people don't. That's what we use a spreadsheet for, to try to make sure everybody's lined up. If, so at the top is the original bids, bid amounts, plus the bond to kind of get a base bid total. And then our scope review and alternates that either go up and down to kind of get everybody leveled out. And then we have a couple of spots for some potential future expenditures. Those are things we're going to, we know we're going to spend money on. Job site maintenance with the earth and temporary stone staging areas, things like that. We have an allowance in there for unsuitable soils in the event that we get some soils that aren't up to snuff for the pavements. So all that's kind of built in and added down to the very bottom line. All those PFEs and allowances are the same value for every bidder. So it's just, that takes that original bid, adds it down to the bottom. And then those totals in the bottom carry forward to the executive summary sheet that you have in front of you. So what we've done on the executive summary sheet is given you the results in three different ways. So the first one is just, we're category 31A, which is for the earthwork. You can see the eight bids that run across there. Lowest bid was Rock Road. Second lowest bid is E&amp;H Hughes. Third was Vit. Four Integrity. Five Silla and Sons. Six was Fisher. Seven H James, and then eight was Hoffman. So that's, if you just look at earthwork alone, those are the results. So then the next table there is just looking at site utilities alone. So individually, site utilities bids go as such. Integrity was the low bid. However, I will note that they weren't willing, and I did double-check with them on their bid form. They said they aren't willing to just do the utilities. They want to do the full package. So the fact that they're not really interested in doing just the utilities has essentially discarded their bid. So then the next bid would be number two. I got the numbers backwards there, sorry about that. But E&amp;H Hughes is number two bid. Madrell is number three. Vit is number four. Rock Road is number five. Fisher is number six. So those are looking at each of those categories individually. And we wanted to try to show you just what it would look like if the packages were combined. And that's where some of the good news comes in. And that first column there is the budget, 5.4 million. And as you can see, each line item, we had the bid results. The first column there was for Hughes for their earthwork, site utilities, and deduct for the combo of the two with a revised total at the bottom. So E&amp;H has low total combined bid. Rock Road has the second lowest. Vit, then Integrity. Silla and Madrell were partnered together, and then Fisher. So those are the bid results. Any questions for me or our team?
Couple of questions. Is the, when you say they're partnering together, does that mean they submitted to be partners or?
Actually, no. They weren't, I know they worked together a lot and they weren't under one bid form. They're under two separate bid forms. So when all these other bidders, E&amp;H bid both of them, Rock Road hit both of them. So that was the likely combination that was going to happen. I know they worked together a lot and they just, it didn't come together as one bid though, no.
One other question for you back in the, you like a, when we're looking at this, what are the other elements that would go into what you all recommend for us? Because clearly, we're interested in the dollars and efficiency on that front, but is there a quality element to the application? Or what other factors go into the recommendation?
Yeah, there's a myriad of things. And I can tell you that we appreciate the way CG Schmidt put this out to bid to give us some flexibility in the award. We're going to talk a little bit about the advantages of combining your mass earthwork with utilities. But by bidding it out as separate entities or separate scopes of work, it just gives us the flexibility to pick and choose a little bit, should that be to our advantage. Now, I think we're going to move forward and say that we don't think that is to our advantage. Combining the scopes of work is a greater advantage for the school district. But there are a number of things that you look at. First of all, there's a big iron job. So earthworkers talk in terms of iron and the types of equipment that they have available to get out onto the job. So we're moving a tremendous amount of soil to, just to make the site conditions work out. So they have to have the equipment to be able to dedicate to the job. So CG Schmidt sort of pre-qualifies them, make sure that they're, they have the capabilities to do the job. That's one factor. Another factor is, do they have bonding capacity? We need them to have the appropriate bonding capacity. This is $5 million worth of work in total. So that is a bit of a self-qualifying feature to it, right? If you're smaller and your bonding company doesn't give you the ability to get up to $5 million worth of work, it kind of self-disqualifies you. Anything you'd add in terms of the evaluation of the bids beyond the dollars themselves?
We definitely take into account earthwork and utilities together because a lot of your spoils that are going to be pulled out of your utilities are going to be used as fill elsewhere. If you have two different companies going on, they kind of have a lot of times their own agendas. So you're going to have earthwork that's trying to get his earthwork done. You have utilities that are trying to get their utilities done. You have spoils that are passed back and forth. And so you lose a little bit of efficiency there when you look at two different companies. And when you combine them, they really work together and utilize those spoils in areas that, across the site. So we did take that into account. We've had a lot of discussions on that as well.
Is there a question?
Yeah.
So they're all bonding, they're capable of bonding. All the bidders.
Yeah, so what we typically do is we focus on the low three bidders usually and spend a little bit more time with them, scoping them out, making sure that they're pre-qualified. There's a certain amount of effort there to pre-qualify contractors. So we just select those first few that are most likely to get the job pre-qualified. Then we didn't necessarily go through the pre-qualification form for every last bidder. But if that is deemed necessary, we will do that.
Do you review previous work or quality of work that they, that companies have previously done?
Yes, that's all handled through without a pre-qualification process.
It's all part of the pre-qualification?
Yep. So.
Mike and Jesse, both of you, and this is kind of speaking on my experience for you guys, looking at these numbers, when you take them together, the most you could save by splitting them up is roughly 2.5%. So right, 125,000, 150,000. The coordination effort and the risk that goes into separating these, I believe, if I were these guys, I would hold a contingency higher than that to deal with the finger pointing that is potentially going to happen. So I appreciate that, from my perspective, having experience in construction, we were able to separate those and see. But seeing them, I would highly recommend we look at them together as a single package. And if you guys could kind of elaborate on that.
There is a recommendation. Jesse feels strongly about that, as do I. CG Schmidt is in line with that. As you said, should, had we gotten in a situation where, I mean, you can look at Rock Road, for instance. They're low on the earthwork, but they're almost the highest on the site utilities. Had we not had an E&amp;H that was quite tight on those two packages, we might look to pairing Rock Road with some other low bidder on the site utilities. There would inherently have been some difficulties in that approach, but it's a risk-reward proposition, right? That if the dollars were significantly different, then we might take that risk that there would be some coordination difficulties, there'd be some finger pointing, there'd be lack, potentially lack of coordination of work in the most logical way to sequence one contractor's work versus the other. But because we have a small delta between pairing it together versus taking two separate bids, we think we're in a much better position, probably, in a better financial position, even though it's slightly higher, because we anticipate less add costs, less use of contingency, less change orders. So it is our recommendation that we lump it together.
The other thing that I saw on this that I was really happy to see is, it's only roughly 5% difference within, when you combine them all, the low four bidders are all pretty tight, which is a really good sign as far as, you know, the drawing packages were clear, they're all bidding similar work. You have a super-low outlier and a super-high outlier, sometimes that can be a little bit concerning. But this looks pretty good, the bids coming in.
That's a good point, because there's a lot of mystery with dirt work, Jesse. There's swell factors that the contractors take into account. What kind of swell factor do they use? Cubic feet of dirt in the earth is different when you extract it and put it on a truck and try to move it around and then compact it. So there's a risk on the amount of rock that they might hit. There's a risk that the material that they dig up is not suitable for use as a compacted fill material. So there's a whole bunch of unknown with it. And because of that, you might expect that contractors would look at the job substantially differently. But the fact that they've looked at it all in a fairly tight range of their bids just gives you a little bit more confidence that they don't see great outliers.
There's a lot of investigation work that goes in at the beginning. It's so boring that we did the test pit digs out on the site. But you are trying to predict what's underground a little bit, which is very difficult. So that's the risk that you're talking about. But like Mike said, when you have four bidders that are all relatively close, it does add a lot of confidence there and makes you feel good about the bids.
One of the things too, to point out, what do we have, like 52 drill sites? And then we dug 10 test pits? So I mean, there was a lot of data for the earthwork people to look at. So I think that, again, speaks to the condition that we have four bids that are pretty close to each other.
So on alternate number two for the site utilities, E&amp;H was somewhat of an outlier on the credit back. Should we choose that alternate? Did you guys dig into that at all?
Not in detail. Actually, there were a couple more outliers when we were digging into this that were way out in left field. There were two bidders that completely misunderstood the alternate, but we got that cleared up. And I didn't feel the need to go too much further into that on them. It was, we did talk about it in the scoping meeting, but didn't really get into the details too much. Was that for both? Yeah, for number two?
Yes.
Ask, can we get more detailed input from them though?
And administration's recommendation is aligned with unreserved, Keel?
Yeah, so we had talked about that. Huffman Keel and myself and Ron, where when we look at this and we look at the pre-qualifications and what's here, our recommendation would be to, for the board to consider awarding it to E&amp;H Hughes for the work.
As a combined package?
As a combined package, yep. So it'd be for the earthwork and the utilities, yep.
All right. And can you guys, some clarifications on E&amp;H? Are they a local contractor?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, their shop is actually adjacent to the site.
I knew the answer to that, but I wanted to make sure that everyone knows that we're recommending local contractor. And the second question, and I know the answer to this too, but are they union or non-union? And how are we going to manage that?
So they're a non-union company. So what would happen is that the school district would hold that contract. So Huffman Keel and ourselves, we would create the contract for the work. And then on-site, then CG Schmidt would manage them on-site.
Yeah, so I'd like to speak to that a little bit more. It's a pretty big deal. It's $5 million worth of work, just under. And the owner would be holding that contract. So there are a couple of things we look into there. First of all, CG Schmidt's contract has a provision for managing owner-direct contract work, or even if the owner did work themselves. CG Schmidt, under contract, has a responsibility to manage that. I will want to look with your attorney, Bill Fahy, at that particular article within, it's Article 3.6, within CG Schmidt's contract to make sure that we feel it's robust enough. And if it's felt that it's not robust enough, we may look for a minor amendment to that contract. These, CG Schmidt is, everything is very positive in terms of the way we approach that and recognize that they are signatory to the operators' union, that Monroe would have to hold that contract. But I just want to make sure that we have complete buy-in on the front end before we get started contractually. Of course, that relates to things like warranty. You're going to build your building on top of the earth that gets moved around and gets compacted to the appropriate level. So there is a bit of due diligence, I would say, on our side, just from a lawyering standpoint.
And to elaborate on that, Mike, you know, as our owners rep, like this is. And to elaborate on that, Mike, you know, as our owner's rep, like this is exactly what we hired you to help us with. Is that accurate? And this is included in your scope of work?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a good question. And again, a good call out, Mike, that we had made a commitment to our community that we were going to, we were going to be looking for local contractors that were capable of doing the work. And it looks like E&amp;N Hughes has stepped up and is the low bidder even.
Mike, I'm trying to track from Mike's question, well, this Mike to that Mike, what's the difference in us working with the union versus non-union contractors specifically in this instance?
Well, first and foremost, C.G. Schmidt is signatory to a number of different unions. They could probably rattle them off real quickly, but I would say things like concrete, cement finishers, carpentry.
Labors.
Operators and labors.
Labors.
So that just means that they have difficulty signing up a non-union shop. Now, from your perspective, you want to know that you have a quality contractor, right? So a union shop is one way to confirm that quality. There's other ways to confirm that quality, right? And it's, some of it has to do with experience, it has to do with this due diligence of prequalifying them. So I think the, when you look at the factors of price, the desire to engage local contractors, that leads us to say, we're okay with that, and we just have to make sure that we have a good quality contractor.
Were there any union bids?
Yes.
Can you tell us which ones?
I believe all of them. I think all the rest.
All the rest?
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure.
I'm not sure. I don't know. So the only one we're not sure of is H. James, but the rest, I believe, are all union.
Certainly Rock Road, Vit, Integrity, Silla, those are all union.
And Fisher. And Huffman as well.
Okay, any additional questions?
Is Rock Road local?
Gainesville.
Gainesville?
Gainesville, Boyd.
They have a pit.
Yeah, they own the asphalt.
A local pit and an asphalt plant.
They own the asphalt plant just north of town on Y as well. They did Eighth Street in Monroe. That was one of their projects. And then they do a lot of DOT work.
Good questions. Anybody else? Hearing any additional questions, we'd be looking to motion to approve. It's not written in here. We'd be looking to a motion to approve awarding bid package number one. I am writing as I. To E&amp;N Hughes in an amount of four million, nine hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars. Before we make the motion, I just want to point out on our sheet, because I don't think you guys see it, the budget for that portion of work was five million, four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and five dollars. So this is, what, about five hundred thousand dollars under the budget numbers that you guys presented us a couple months ago?
Yeah, and after, I'll give an update after this. I can give you an update on the total project budget.
Well, yeah, thanks for pointing that out.
With that being said, I would make that motion. Motion by Mike?
Second.
And a second by Dylan before we vote.
Will there be discussion on the motion?
Yep, we'll have discussion on the motion. Just to reiterate again, the motion is to approve bid package number one, to award bid package number one to E&amp;N Hughes in the amount of four million, nine hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars. Motion by Mike, second by Dylan. Discussion before we vote.
I'm just wondering if the motion should include any kind of a contingency to vet out the contract with the integrity with C.G. Schmidt.
You talked about.
Yeah, and again, the contract currently does have language pertaining to managing an owner's, an owner's direct vendor. I just think it's worth a little due diligence to, if you feel the contract would need an amendment, do you foresee any trouble getting that amendment?
I don't.
Good question. All right, any additional discussion before we vote? Hearing none by voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Any folks? Next item on the agenda is approval of five-year nondiscrimination self-evaluation report. So this is a regular, every five-year report that, sorry, I'm looking at my notes here real quick.
Yep.
It's attached to the board packets. Joe, would you like to walk us through?
I would love to.
Or answer any question?
I have one question before we get started. My understanding was, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't know what's happening, but it's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda.
But it implied that there was going to be a next step in.
Sure.
Yeah.
Take a moment, give us a little update on.
Yeah, so, you know, as you saw, we were about a half a million dollars under on the earthwork package. We did hold back money because there's some of the, some of this package was not at the athletic fields, softball and baseball, and then at the football field. There's some, there's still some things there, site utilities and earthwork that weren't complete enough to bid in this package. So there is money for that. And that, so then we went through and we did the full SD package that PRA provided and diagram on his package. And we went through and priced out everything completely again. So this would have been the second time. We had more information this time in the DD package. Michael took off again, I think, but.
Can you, SD and DD?
Yes, so SD is the schematic design, and that's the phase that we were looking at. So it was SD, schematic design, and bid package one kind of together. Bid package one on the civil schematic design on the rest of the building plans. So when we got those plans, then we were able to put another price on it, just like we had done, I think we were here in January. So we did another round of budgeting, took some of the newer information that we had, and then we go out for pricing on that. And so then there's things that go up, things that go down. There's some things that we weren't sure, you know, that we didn't know about that got added. And it's a, and in the end, we're coming out, you know, pretty much on budget. There's a few things that were, you know, like Michael talked about, the wood in the pack, and there's a few other things that we're still working through. But as of now, we're staying on, pretty much on budget. So, which is, which is great news at this level. We really haven't had any kind of spikes. And I think the interest, the interest in these packages is a good sign that I think, as we move forward, we're going to hopefully have good interest in all the rest of the packages. The next group of packages that'll go out will be, excuse me, bid package one at the end of April, or I'm sorry, bid package two at the end of April, which will be the foundations. It'll have the precast and some of the MEPs potentially, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fire protection. So those will be the next packages to go out. And once we get through that bidding at that level, we'll have sixty to seventy percent of the project bid out complete. And we will be more or less, you know, locked in. Other than unforeseen things on the site, we would be pretty well locked in on pricing at that point. Obviously, finishes would be the last package that'll be out in June. But, so we would be in a good position to really be pretty confident that, and we're confident now, but we'll really be locked in at the end of May, roughly timeframe.
It's around that point, the guaranteed maximum price kicks in with C.G. at the around that point, correct?
Yep, I think it will be at the, I don't know, I think we'll have a, we might have an initial GMP at the end of May-ish timeframe. And then the final GMP would be after the package in June, which would be everything bid out. But, yeah. So any questions on that? There's, I mean, it's, we go through everything in detail and we've had conversations at our, you know, our weekly meetings and things like that. Is there any questions that you have?
Mike's paid to worry. You have any questions?
I don't have any questions, no. I've got a couple of comments. You know, in 2021, 2022, and half of 2023, there was no such thing as good news. Didn't exist, didn't happen. So if there's a little bit of a silver lining and you're being a little bit late, later than you expected to be to the bid market, it is that there's a reintroduction of good news. So take it while we can. Definitely got it on this package and hope that that bodes well for us in the future packages. But we're definitely still in a budget struggle as the designs come together. That's, that's every project. So all in all, I say we're in a good spot.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Todd.
One more question, sorry.
One more question?
Go ahead, Jim.
One last question.
I noticed when Michael was giving the presentation, he said, no significant changes since the last time. And it just kind of registered in my brain, how are we defining significant? And so just, could you help us understand, in some of the moves for the budget, I get it staying relatively, like it's close to target, staying on, like, what are the top two or three things that we've had to adjust, sacrifice, prioritize?
Who are you asking?
Well, anyone who would prefer to answer that, I guess.
I can talk about the, you know, the overall budget. So one thing, here's a good example of something that we had to add. We have to add a underground holding for the fire protection system because there's not enough pressure. We already had the pump, but we had to have underground holding tank to hold water because if you ran the pump and there was a fire, it would, there wouldn't be enough water flow. So, and that, just for an example, that's three hundred thousand dollars. So, you know, that's something that we've had to add. And then there's been, you know, just, you get more definition. So, you know, we put together a concrete package based on no plans, and now we have some definition of those areas. So things can change a little bit there. And then we have a lot more finish items where they've given us some definition of what the finishes are, and we're starting to put pricing to those. So those things, you know, some things go up and some things go down. So, yeah, I mean, that's, I guess that, that, that holding, underground holding is a significant one. You know, there's a few other things that were added. But, you know, again, if we're keeping, some things are going down and some things are going up and we're, you know, and the help of the bid package certainly did help eat up some of those things that had increased. So that's, that's good. Does that answer your question?
Jim, when Michael's talking, no significant changes from an architecture point of view probably means he hasn't had to move any exterior walls, hasn't had to eliminate any spaces en masse, or, you know, en masse. So.
Yeah, when I'm talking about changes, it might be a type of a product, like a ceiling tile or flooring. We're not changing, nothing with the program, the program spaces have not changed at all. None, zero. So, but, yeah, it's related to building types, products, and things like that. Nothing with the size of the building or program has changed at all.
Any more questions? All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mike. And the whole team appreciate all the work. All right.
Hi, Rich.
Hey, Joe. Would you like to walk us through our five-year nondiscrimination report?
Sure. So as Rich mentioned, Wisconsin's administrative code requires us to, thanks, guys. Good job.
Thanks, guys.
Good work. You appreciate it.
Have a good night.
This is something in the state of Wisconsin that's required with school districts. There's a lot of school districts that look at this, and it can be perceived as being a bit of a pain. One of the things I'm proud of in our district is that we've always used this as an opportunity to look for opportunities to get better. And for that reason, we've always used an outside consultant to come in and do this work. We've used a consultant by name Aaron Meyer who came in and conducted a number of procedures that are aligned in the report. And I'm not going to go through everything because there's a lot there, but I want to hit the highlights. But ultimately, what we're looking for here is to make sure that we're compliant with the law and then look for areas for potential improvement, which I'll touch on quickly as we go through. And so please feel free to ask any questions as I'm hitting some of the highlights here. One of the most important things, certainly for the board, is that, is identified that our board policies are compliant. I think that's largely relative to Neola and the work that we do with that service. I think that's a big deal for the board and certainly for the district to make sure that we're getting timely updates and that we're compliant in that area. Our Title IX procedures, as one of the Title IX coordinators, it's important to know that our procedures and our responses were deemed to be appropriate and prompt and legally compliant. So we're in good shape there. There's some enrollment trend information that was shared. And just so you know, this is, the report format, it comes from a DPI template that's provided. So the consultant uses that template, shares some things with, within that template or that structure. One of the things that was identified was that more minority students take part in dual credit classes than in advanced placement classes. So that's one of the things that we'll probably talk about at the, certainly at the high school and with our school counselors, to take a look at that and see what we can identify as potential reasons why that might be going on and see how we can encourage more participation from some of our minority students in AP classes. Going through a lot of areas of compliance and positive things, athletics and extracurriculars. I think one of the things that was highlighted was to consider conducting a survey to determine if the current athletic programs are meeting the needs and interests of all students. And I would extend that to all extracurriculars as well. So that's something we can talk to Jeff about. I know Jeff himself has talked a little bit about that recently. And I think it's something for us to take a look at to get a sense of whether or not we're meeting the needs of our current student body. Scholarships was probably an area that had the most attention in the report and something that I think we need to take a look at. I think the biggest takeaway is I think there's some updates that we can do, particularly with our scholarship webpage. But most importantly, I think, given our scholarship program, we probably need to do a better job of collecting data for our scholarship awards in a way that allows us to disaggregate and look at that on a regular basis. I think we have some of that data, but maybe not as much as we would like. And we want to be able to get a sense of some of the trends that are happening. And certainly as we become a more diverse community and looking at those scholarship awards, making sure that everything that we're doing is done in a fair and equitable manner. Aside from that, I think there weren't any major recommendations. There were some other little ones, but I don't want to spend a lot of time on this. I think overall, the report indicated that we're in pretty good shape. I think we're compliant with our policies and our practices. We're going to take a look at some things that need some adjustment. This report's going to be made available on the district website for people to review, and there'll be a legal notice that we'll be issuing that, makes people aware of the report's availability. So, that'd be happy to answer any questions that you all might have at this point.
Joe, you talked about a number of things that we need to take a look at. Do you or someone within the district actually create like an action plan related to this where we can actually kind of check whether we did look into it and make sure that we're taking action?
Yeah, so a People Services Team meeting on Friday, one of the things we're going to do is review this. I've already taken all the recommendations from this report and started generating a document. And what we'll do is we'll start talking about what that looks like and how we're going to approach, attack some of these things. Obviously, there'll be some levels that have more direct connection to some of the recommendations. But, yeah, this doesn't just go in a file in a cabinet. This is something that we take and then we'll create a plan to address those things and make sure that we're in good shape. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Jim?
I was looking at the student demographic breakdown. Sorry, I lost my page. But on the report card, it has, it lists the high school as eighty-eight percent white. And then in the district-wide data, my math has it ninety-five percent, and then it just has the first letter of each race. data, my math has it 95%, and then it just has the first letter of each race or ethnicity. It has a number five next to H, which would suggest we have five Hispanic students. Am I reading this wrong?
What page are you on, Jim?
Nine, bottom of nine.
Yeah, that may be a data entry error. I can, I can go back and look and double-check what was entered. Obviously, we have more than five Hispanic students. I'll tell you that I don't love the template format that's provided and used. I think there's some areas that could provide more area for detail, but I can go in and double-check what was entered here. Not sure why that is.
I think the table that's earlier in the document is, those percentages are probably more accurate. Yeah, five would not be accurate. So there's one up on, like, page three or four that I think the percentages are much more, more correct.
Yeah, so if you look at the bottom of page seven, that provides some of that breakdown. But I can, and I can call Aaron and see what that is, and we can get some of that corrected if necessary as well. But if I'm looking at, that might be, you know, that doesn't make sense.
Good eye, Jim. Good eye, good catch.
It just, it made me wonder about some of the, I was curious if the data that's on the report card is matching what we have. You know, because there's a percentage of kids who enroll in dual credit, and it was hard for me to map the different data points. I was just curious if, if there is a discrepancy, we should figure that out, of course, but I didn't know if you all had checked to see if they were this, they were consistent there.
Yeah, I have not yet gone through this and matched it up to what we know to be true in our own data. I was relying on what Aaron provided, but certainly I think we'll dig into some of that based on what you just brought up to see, to make sure that what's been entered is accurate, especially if we're going to be posting this for the public. We want to make sure that everything that's in here is appropriate.
Joe, this one's to us for approval for tonight. Do you want to, do we want to bring it back after verification of the data?
Certainly can. Technically, the board isn't legally required to approve it. It's just something that was put on the report. Cindy and I talked about this. If you look on the cover, it was, had for board approval tonight. So Cindy's like, "Well, then let's put it on here for board approval." The board has never approved it in the past. I'm comfortable with whatever you think is best, Rich. I'd be happy to get some of this verified and then bring it back if that's what you would like to do.
Sure, let's do that.
Let me ask a question.
Yeah, we'll keep chatting about it. We just want to take it for action tonight.
Sounds good. Bill?
And so on the bottom of page seven, just another data point, that table, the second column from the right, is that a percent?
7% English language learned.
Oh, that's not, that's not.
166%.
That's a number. That's a total number.
Yeah, we'll, we'll go through this with Aaron, and then we'll get some of this verified and cleaned up. That might have, I'm guessing she is entering some raw numbers versus the percentage there.
On the action plans that you mentioned, Joe, is there like an interval or a timeframe that you set as a goal for completion of those individual items? Is it by the next five-year report?
Gosh, no. More likely, depending on what specific recommendation that we're talking about, we would probably want to get that cleaned up by the end of the summer. So, for example, one of the things I'm going to talk to the high school team about is our scholarship webpage and what we want to have on there and make sure that all the appropriate information is included. And those are things that we can get done in short order, and those make for good summer projects for us to get taken care of. So more likely, we're talking about by the beginning of the 24, 25 school year.
And in those action plans, like, especially as you're bringing up, like, scholarships and stuff, is there intention to pull from students' experience to help navigate those and, like, just get their feedback to help kind of streamline that?
Help me understand what you're asking, Ruby. So in terms of...
Like, when you're putting together these action plans, is there intention, like, on your part and on the pupil services, to include students in making these changes to make it the best for them and the school community?
Certainly, yeah, we would welcome any feedback. Part of this process early on is that there was a kind of an all-call, and that happened in part at the board meeting where we offered opportunities for people to provide input. As you can expect, not a lot of people were lining up to do that. But certainly, I don't want to speak for Jeremy, but I think, you know, part of the efforts at the high school and the student services department is to welcome feedback from students. There's some things that we need to do in order to better connect with students. I think specifically for us, when we're talking about minority students, one of the things that we're going to need to do is connect with certain groups of students to see what we can do to make sure that they have the information they need so they can access those programs as all other students are. Yeah, please.
I think it might be a bigger project, too, because, you know, a lot of these scholarships have been longstanding in Monroe, and we don't own the scholarship as a district. We do it on behalf of other people and organizations, of people who endowed things for years and decades. So it may be time to start thinking and talking with those people about doing things a little bit differently than, because they set forth the criteria for themselves. We don't set that. Maybe we can do some conversations to see if we can make it a little bit more equitable across all the scholarships. I don't know that we can guarantee that, you know, with them doing that, but it might be a conversation to have with people.
Ruby, is your question more towards engagement? If we're going to create some way for students to apply for the scholarships in some different way?
Yeah, and I mean, like, not specifically for scholarships, but just in general, like, as we're talking about ways to, like, make these action plans. Just want to make sure that there's still student voice in that, because I know sometimes there's that disconnect between administration and then the students that are being affected by the action plans.
Good point.
Good thought.
Yes.
Okay. Any additional questions on this? Otherwise, administration will bring it back again at the next meeting.
One other kind of a thought, I guess, if, I realize this isn't the only thing driving action for us here, but the, I'm imagining that schedules for high school students are being created now, or, I guess, I don't know what the exact timeline is. Maybe my ask would be the, I would hope that we would set some kind of a target for next year around access to AP classes and dual credit classes by different identity markers. And so that's something that probably can't be done at the end of the summer. It would have to be done on an earlier timeline.
Yeah, I think I'd like to have a bigger discussion about that, because I think this report might hold AP as the gold standard, but things are changing. So it isn't always the most beneficial or the gold standard for depending on the student and their aspirations in life. So I'd rather not set a blanket goal, saying, "Everybody has to get this many to AP," when it might not meet their needs to do so. But I think that's a bigger discussion.
Yeah, I think that's a good conversation to have, and I think one thing, Jim, that I've heard you talk about is, you know, let's just have some transparency and awareness of where we're at relative to some of those data points within the district, and then I think connect that to what Jeremy's saying in terms of what is it that we're really trying to accomplish and put that in the context of all the work that's currently happening.
He hasn't heard about all of our SOAR program that we're doing, our youth apprenticeship programming, all the trades jobs that are out there that are wonderful jobs for people. It doesn't require AP courses, not in all situations anyway. So it may not be beneficial for them to take those, and it might be more beneficial for them to take dual credit courses or really getting college credit towards welding certificates or whatever it might be. I just want to be careful that we're not just setting that goal because we think everybody needs to get there, when it might not be beneficial to all kids.
It's just one path.
Yes, it's one pathway.
And I, and I know, I would, I would agree. Like, it's not, it's not the path for everybody, right? But it's, but I think maybe to this report, the idea is, is it equitable across groups? So, for example, if, if in one demographic we have 20% of people taking AP classes, do we have 20% across demographics, right? Because that's true, like, that's true across all demographics. Not AP isn't for everybody.
And these aren't percentages, correct? They're numbers.
Well, I think that's one thing that we have to clean up here. But Teresa's point is a good one in that I think, you know, one of the things that we want to ensure is that all students, regardless of their background, have equal access to the various programs, right? And so I think what you're saying is absolutely correct and true. I think one of the things for our student services department that we talk about is making sure that we're getting all the information to all of the students, regardless of their background, their interests, their race, their disability. And I know I'm not telling you anything you don't know, right? But, and then to take a look at how that plays out and then ultimately identify any gaps that we might have in our services.
I very much agree with you. I just think that we need to have a larger conversation about the different pathways that are out there, because they shift over the years, right? And I just want to be sure that we're meeting all the kids' needs.
Additional questions before we move on? All right, not hearing any. Move on to item D. It's the approval of CISA Two Contracted Services. So this one's up for action. As a reminder, CISA is a cooperative educational services agency that we are a part of. We contract with them for services each year. There's a memorandum of understanding attached to the board packets that are describing the services we'll have access to. It's the same services we had last year, at the same cost, I believe. Turn it over to admin. Is there any additional context here?
So there's, there's a, there's a base membership fee that we pay, but the two services that we mostly use from CISA Two are both based on IEPs. That's different students have. So the two main areas is pulled in is orientation and mobility. It's IEP-based. And services for students who are blind or visually impaired. Again, that's based on what their IEPs are. So those are the two things that we have checked off in our contract, and those are done, I think they call them unit pricing, Joe, right?
Yep, those are dependent on the specific services that are outlined in the IP. So obviously, that can change from year to year, but we work closely with those to make sure they understand what we're going to be meeting for the upcoming year.
So I did meet with CISA Two rep today to review our program, about how we proceed in the program, areas that they are wondering if we could, we could use them more for, or they could provide services for. So, but he'll finish that, finish our meeting up and send his notes back to me, so.
This is an acronym alert. What's IEP?
Oh, sure. Individualized Education Program. So it's a document that's created for students with special needs. It's kind of an educational contract that we, we put into place with parents to make sure that we're providing the appropriate services.
So this one's up for approval this evening to approve the CISA Two Contracted Services for '24 through '25, if somebody would like to make that motion. Motion by Teresa, second by Jim. Discussion before we vote. By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next item for approval is Board Scholarship. So Scholarship Committee met on March 8th, planned Board Scholarship recipients that are made, the Board Scholarship recipients are made possible through the generosity of endowed scholarships. They're attached to your packets. These are, as Mr. Spielman likes to say, donations for good forever. So these were donations from endowments that will never end. Board will award over $100,000 in scholarships during the evening. It's just a portion of the generosity that's on display that day, that night, and the contents are embargoed until the evening that they are awarded on May 8th. Last year, Nikki and Eric helped me award them, so Nikki, if you're available and willing, I'd be looking for one more volunteer to assist me on May 8th, and then I'd be looking for a motion. You get to hand some checks to some very deserving kids, if anybody would like to join me up there with Nikki. You in, Phil? All right. Sounds good. All right. I would entertain a motion to approve the board-issued scholarships as listed, if somebody would like to make one. I've got Mike and, was that Jim?
Yep.
Mike with the motion and Jim with the second. By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next item is discussion of new or reviewed Neola policies. This is a first reading. We've got two sets of policies here. These came through Policy Committee this evening. Again, it's a first reading, no action this evening. Admin or Dylan, anything you'd like to draw attention to?
Not particularly. They're mostly minor changes. The new ones are a lot, like job descriptions, are three of them. Just saying that we need to have them, which we do already. So those are new. Some language changes, but nothing too big.
Okay. Again, these are, these are both first readings. It's okay if we don't have questions this evening. Sometime between now and the next board meeting, if anything comes to mind, get it over to Fig, and then I'll confer with Dylan. Any additional questions on this item? Okay, so that's item F. Any questions or discussion around item G, which are additional policy updates and revisions, first reading?
So a lot of the things that are in these revisions are the language changes, like how they refer to individuals or, or people that they're talking about in this policy in specific. So it seems like they change, and then three years later, they change to something else, and three years later, they change back to what it was. So it's just something, it shows that they're looking at them, they're changing them. Used to, for example, some of them said, "Used to say he," and then they said "he" and "she," and then they said "them." So those types, a lot of that is that type of language changes. Some of the other things are just the way things go. If there's a, if there's a number of steps that have to happen in a procedure, you know, what happens in this step, this step, this step, and just make sure that it's spelled out.
I noticed some were related to new legislation or laws or things that change, and so those have to be updated in policies.
In the new ones, especially when they change statute numbers, or even in these, when they change state statute numbers, they have to change the policy. So, yep.
All right. Additional conversation? Okay. I'll move on to informational items. Go over to Ruby with the student report.
We've got a lot of names to read tonight, so.
All right.
Starting off, I just wanted to mention the youth apprenticeship job there that just happened this past Thursday. This was organized by the Southwest Workforce Development Board and hosted by the high school, and Kara Carper especially did a lot of work getting this organized for us and our students. So 19 businesses participated, as well as Blackhawk Tech, the Job Center, and the Equal Rights Division of the Department of Workforce Development. And we, those businesses were from Green County and somewhere into Rock County as well. So we had more than 270 students attend from Monroe, Judah, Broadhead, Monticello, and Blackhawk High School. So that was, there's a lot of buses in the parking lot on Thursday. All right, so we have the solo ensemble starred firsts, and solo ensemble is an event where students in music can perform for a judge, get scored, and then are eligible to perform at state, which this year is on April 27th at UW Platteau. So for band, we had Simon Carus with a saxophone solo, Liam Trong with a piano solo, Hamilton Stites on euphonium, myself on flute, Alex Garrett on trombone, and Sophia Wu on piano in choir. We had Sam Wolf with musical theater soprano alto solo, Charlotte Peters on soprano, Keegan Mulligan with musical theater tenor bass, as well as a bass baritone solo, Kira Schmidt with an alto solo, Lily Cherny soprano solo and musical theater, John Beardmore with a bass baritone solo, Healy Mulligan with musical theater as well as an alto solo, Hayden Jackson with musical theater soprano alto and an alto solo. Hayden Jackson with musical theater soprano alto and an alto solo, Jack Tran with bass baritone as well as a musical theater tenor bass solo. And then there was an ensemble with Hayden Jackson, Lily Cherny, John Beardmore, and Jack Tran. So these are all of our solo ensemble students. And then we had a couple of forensics events and a ton of people from our forensic team going to state. So we have Allison Adrian with radio, John Beardmore with radio, Piper Bird with solo humorous, Lauren Bonner with Rachel Mauer and Oliver Jay, and they did a play together, Tata Bukutsi with a public address, Oliver, Olivia, sorry, Karani with poetry, Bella Davis and Sam Wolf with a play, Sam Wolf with poetry, Jada Jackson with moments in history, as well as Ashton Clem with moments in history, Owen Clem on prose, Carolyn Martel with storytelling, Cynthia Murphy with prose, Jade Myers with poetry, Eli Schaefer, no relation, with demonstration informative, spelled differently, Marina Schubert on poetry, James Wall with poetry, Lily Cherny with farago, and then Lily Cherny, James Wall, John Beardmore, and Piper Bird in a play. And then this past weekend, we had conference forensics and we had a couple of people get first place in their events. We had Sam Wolf and Bella Davis with play acting, Lily Cherny with farago, Piper Bird solo humorous, Ashton Clem with moments in history, and John Beardmore with radio speaking. So that's all our forensics. And then in the past month, we also had a couple individual students just with some different achievements. So Parker Lenzendorf earned two Silver Key Awards for Art at the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards, and she had a couple pieces of her art displayed at the Milwaukee Art Museum, which is pretty cool. Ryan Matheson was named Elite Academic Allstate for Boys Basketball. He was one of 16 boys basketball players in the state, and this is an honor selected and recognized for outstanding academics and athletics. And then we also had Keegan Paulson, she was nominated for our school today, athlete of the week. So this is an athlete that was nominated, and she was nominated for being instrumental with the two season openers, their two season opener wins in Tennessee over spring break. And so the whole, anybody could vote for her. Unfortunately, she did not win, but she was still nominated, which is an achievement in and of itself. That's all of that.
Okay. For boardsmanship, Board of Canvassers convened today at 3:30, Cindy?
Yes.
All right, at the DACT to certify results. Congratulations to Teresa, Phil, and Jim on your reelection. The board will reorganize at the next meeting, and thanks for your dedication to the board and community. Graduation this year is Friday, May 24th at 6:00 PM. Nikki is going to be handing out diplomas, and I need one more additional board member there to assist her. Anybody available on that Friday, Siggen?
Friday, May 24th.
If you'd like me to.
Sure.
Yeah, if you're willing.
Okay, so Mike and Nikki handing out diplomas to our graduates. Administration, you want to cover?
So we do have a couple internal transfers. So Kylie Oyen from Parkside Special Education to Parkside First Grade, and Lisa Duffy from Abraham Lincoln Fifth Grade to Parkside Fifth Grade.
All right. Board of Education Correspondents, we have had some correspondence. All, all the emails the board has received are in process to be responded to, so nothing pending that I'm aware of that we haven't acknowledged or are working towards responding to. Committee reports. Jim?
Nothing here.
Phil?
I know committee, but I wanted to give a shout out to the Middle School Student Council. They had their Wisconsin Association of School Councils State Jam Conference. I'm not sure what CHAM stands for.
It stands for like junior high, middle school, the combination of it.
But the shout out to the Middle School Student Council is they were the school district for the entire state that hosted the conference, which is a tremendous amount of work and organization. They did an outstanding job. I attended yesterday, and, you know, just super impressive. So I just wanted to give a shout out. They did a great job.
And I hear one of our students is, is the secretary for Region Five.
Yes, she, and she'll be moving into president, yes, and then, yes. From our district, yes, yes. A lot of it, it was great.
Not to overlook the advisors, Ms. McGuire and.
Mrs. Peterson.
Mrs. Peterson. Tremendous amount of commitment and work on their part as well, so.
Lot of organization, a lot of time.
Great job. Fantastic job. That's all I have, Rich.
Thank you, Phil. Teresa?
Curriculum is meeting, usually we meet this Monday, but we, with other meetings, we are meeting on the 22nd.
Okay.
So we'll meet the 22nd.
Okay. Mike? Helen?
Policy met, ARC meeting tonight. We had some first readings on our agenda.
Nikki?
ERC met, and now we're scheduling, we've got a few dates, we're reaching out to each of the groups to see when they can meet next, so.
Yeah, Mass is scheduled and MEA, I just sent you tonight the confirmation, so the ERC members should see that.
Thank you.
All right, agenda items for future discussion from board members. Liaison records, anything from Mass or MEA? Okay, five minutes for the press.
Hang on. So a month ago, we heard about, you know, the cuts that we had to get, and APEB's losing a couple, and one of them that kept coming up, when people would ask about the parents of APEB students, was, you know, losing their daily guidance counselor, school counseling policy 2411, I believe is what I was pointed to. So at this moment, I know the plans aren't exactly all figured out, but how does the district plan to maybe meet daily counseling needs for the students at APEB if they're not having a guidance counselor there on a daily basis?
So I think.
Yeah, so, yeah, so this is, this is a topic that we were also, somebody asked us about that this morning as well. We're not, we're not not having a guidance counselor at APEB. So we're going to meet what we have to do for the state, and we'll probably exceed it like we normally do. So, Joe, did you get a chance to look over that stuff I gave you this morning?
Yeah, I mean, just directly to your question, the plan is that we utilize school counselors from the other two elementaries, take part of their time to provide schooling services, particularly the self-classes, and as well as some additional time to provide some coverage there. In addition, we have a full-time school psych that's positioned at APEB, and we'll also provide some of the counseling support in the building as well.
Be available like on the fly, you know, something comes up, they kind of need somebody at the moment, we'll be, give some response there, if there's something like, you know, in the moment.
Yeah, we feel, we feel very confident that we're going to have plenty of support to meet the needs of the students at APEB Lincoln. It won't be the same. I think anyone who would suggest that it's exactly the same as, as it is now would be, that'd be inaccurate. But the reality is that we have a plan that's currently being developed to address the self-classes as well as some of the counseling support that's necessary at APEB.
Include a full-time psych in the building?
Yes.
Well, as that's developed and finalized, I assume that'll be communicated to the parents of the students.
Yeah, that's up to Fig. And I've got to follow the lead of Fig, and so the communication plan has to come from the top. So I'm happy to communicate any and all plans, the direction of Fig and the board.
And so there's, there's things that we're still going to be working on, so we still, we're still looking at some of the staffing things that are, staffing just changing now through the spring going into the fall. Yeah, we're gonna, we'll keep looking at it, keep talking, administrative team will keep talking, and we'll make sure we have a solid plan in place when school starts. As things, as we get information, we'll make sure we share it. There's a couple, there's a couple parents that, that hopefully I'll get a chance to meet with this week, before halfway through the week here, and be able to listen to them and answer some of their questions as best as we can as well, so.
Thank you.
I, I just want to say that I think it's important for me to say publicly that there's a lot of work that's been happening behind the scenes. I don't want to speak for Sarah, but Sarah's been working hard, been working with Todd and some of the other principals, still got schedules and services and how we're going to provide some of those supports. And so not all of that's been communicated to this point, but certainly it's important to us that we're meeting the needs of the kids at all of our buildings, and much of that work is happening, and when we're given the direction, it's the appropriate time to communicate some of that, we'll certainly be happy to do so.
So maybe some clarification on the, the school psych versus school counselor in ensuring that we have someone onsite at APEB at all times, because I, I don't know if this is accurate or not, but it was implied to me that the school psych also serves some off-site programs as well. So first of all, is that accurate? Are they serving off-site, so I think same VIX and the 4K programs? And then how do we ensure that if they get pulled offsite, that there's that guidance counselor that's pulled in? Or do we, or is that part of the plan that's developing that you can share with us?
Sure, so there's a couple layers to that. First, yes, the school site network at APEB Lincoln is also supporting some of the 4K programming that involves community sites across the district. We don't have anything that guarantees that a school counselor or a school psych is available at any minute of any day. The principals for the other buildings can tell you that that's not always the case in their buildings either. There's no guarantee there, I mean, particularly when we have elementary schools with 375 kids, middle school, high school, there's a lot of needs, and so there's, you know, I think there's this narrative out there that what are we going to do, because there won't be a school counselor at any given minute to respond at that time to a student needs. We have a lot of people that are responsible for the needs of our kids, and we make sure that we have support for our kids, whether it be from the school's counselors, school psych, or a variety of other positions. So it's absolutely correct that the school psych would also be providing some services across the community, but it's also important to remember that the number of students at APEB Lincoln is significantly less than the number of students at the other elementary schools. So we feel confident that the services that are necessary to support the kids at APEB Lincoln will be, be in place. It will not be the same as it is now. Quite frankly, APEB Lincoln has the luxury of having a lot of time and a lot of support relative to the number of students that they have, and that's a good thing. That's, I think, speaks to one of the reasons why APEB has been so successful. But I think if we, we get caught up in this idea that there needs to be someone available at a moment's notice at a, for every student, that's just not realistic. That's not how our schools work, and no school can guarantee that. But what I can say is that we're going to have a plan and appropriate support for our kids to make sure they get what they need when it's necessary. I don't know if that answered your question.
No, absolutely, and I appreciate that because that has not been part of the narrative that I, at least as a board member, have heard, that, you know, all our schools don't have that, that full-time counselor there at all times available.
Yeah, and I want to say in fairness to the parents, I would understand why they would ask those questions because I think it's a context that, you know, not all of the information is, has been available to this point. And I think certainly when you look at positions and FTEs, I think it's, it's easy to say, we have a school counselor that's there 100% of the time, and certainly with the school psych, we can talk about that as well. I think in terms of ratios and availability of services, I think that's, that's where some of the story lies, to, to be clear about the amount of service that's available to our kids in one school versus another and making those comparisons. And again, if the board wants to have a more comprehensive conversation about some of those things, I'm certainly ready to do that. Todd's ready, we've done a lot of work on this, our principals have had those conversations, and frankly, I think the parents deserve that conversation.
Thank you. I think you had a couple minutes left there.
Sorry if that was a long-winded response.
Okay. Next, so we're gonna, we have a closed session this evening. We do have action on the agenda after the closed session regarding rolling district administrator contracts. In addition to that topic, in close, we're receiving feedback from the district administrator on the valy, on his evaluation, and we'll continue to discuss negotiations on a possible entrance to the north for our new high school campus. I'm sure how long it's going to take to get through those items. Folks are welcome to stay for that action, or I welcome to watch the YouTube feed, we'll resume it when we come back in to open again. So I would entertain a motion to move into closed session in accordance with Wisconsin statutes 19.85, print one, print C, and print E, for the purpose of discussing the district administrator evaluation, administrative contracts, and discussing north property entrance. At 9:05. Motion by Nikki, second by Mike. Nikki, would you call the roll, please?
Yep, Nikki, yes. Jim?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Absent. Mike?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Terry is absent. Phil?
Yes.
All right.